Yeah.
Uh, well, the county, county.
Open space. Well, that's what we were told.
There were, there were about three parcels of all, the whole Apple Valley. And according to the count. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Hello.
But anyway, neither here. But yeah, he, he didn't, he didn't construct one of those.
Well, that's why we're here for them. But it would've been nice to have known.
That's funny that we haven't notified everybody's property.
But they don't notify us.
Well, publicly, and we're not even, we weren't by the middle.
Send it around. Well, that's what I'm saying, I wanted to think all that. When it was, it's been, according to the county, it's been open space. This, uh.
Open space.
But not transitional.
Open space twenty and open space transition.
It was, that, that was a town. It was, it was all rolled in the, the town rolled it all into one. There's no better.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
If that makes sense.
Everyone else is an email.
Why does that?
Oh, okay.
We just.
Uh, all we were doing was talking to the county, the county, right, the county man.
Which is.
Where it said, we're open space, open.
Nobody, you don't know what that is? Oh, I don't like it. Nothing loud on it, except for.
Right, right, but that's, that's a town, that's a town there, open space. Yeah.
Uh, yeah. We better get started.
That makes sense.
Are you ready, John?
Well, what happens is you're used to being in town and then you got to be in town.
Do you know already, we didn't get to do, we signed the name.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
When it was formed a town, a committee came to me and almost begged me to sign a thing to my property with the attitude.
Right.
So if you made a town.
All right, I think we'll follow this meeting to order, this is the, uh, August thirteen, twenty twenty-one, uh, meeting of the planning commission. Um, let's start with a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so a little while since we've done that.
A while since we've done it.
Um. So let's do the roll call, who's here?
Lee Brayley's here.
Alan Angel is here.
This is Baker here.
And let the minute show that when is a pre-existing vacation shed plan and at the last minute, um, hour or so ago, Dan, uh, suffered from migraines, so.
Yeah.
No, she's, she's probably asleep in a dark room. She's a migraine. So we barely made it into where with the quorum, so that's good, at least there's us. Um. Does anybody in the room here have any conflict of interest with any of the agenda items on the?
Um, where is the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I.
Okay. Uh, and let's see, do we have some minutes to approve?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Last means.
I got it. All right, so we've got several hearings we've got to do here, um, are all, let's see, we have three applications, right, they're all free, I think, three separate individuals?
Two separate.
Only two separate. So who's here representing, let's see, um, AB one dash three dash five dash two one one?
He were already the applicant, I don't.
Not here.
Not here, okay, then let's, let's put him toward the end. And then which one are you, which, which parcel are you folks?
Uh, we're the one, three, five, four, dash, B, dash, nine.
Okay, let's.
We're number two, um, wait a minute.
Three.
Maybe, where, where did, how you have this, where are AB one, three, five, nine, dash, that's not.
You just.
We are not the, of those other numbers.
Gotcha.
So let's do the, let's do the, uh, general plan, um, discussion about that one, uh, and if I accurate in saying that, the requested designation is not in our general plan, right?
With this.
Okay, so that's what we do have to have a discussion about. So I'd like to open that public hearing, um, before we hear from the public, though, I'd like to have, uh, give John a chance to give us anything with regard to, uh, discussions that town staff have had. We, you, you all may know that some months ago, we created what is, in fact, the joint utility commission of sorts gathering of people to get together to discuss these applications. The idea is to get as many of the, um, concerns, uh, that might arise from an application, um, discussed ahead of time and then a staff recommendation come to us, so John's going to give us that now. And then when he's done, we'd like to have you all just kind of describe what your application is all about, and then we'll have the public, uh, discussion.
Okay, so, um, because I'm a little late on the take on this one, um, I'm not actually going to make any recommendations, because normally when I do that, I like to give the applicant at least a week's head up, so they have some response time, everything, so I'm just going to give some basic facts. Um, I'm going to suggest a criteria to use for making this decision, and then, um, uh, I'm just going to leave the staff recommendation off the list, right, it's just to, it makes sense to you. So the first thing to do is just give a kind of conceptual overview of, uh, the three applications that are before you today. Um, see if we can find a map that kind of covers all three of them.
Can you pack it? They're all pretty close to each other, right?
Yeah.
So.
So if you go to page, um, thirty-eight. Are you?
All right, we're good.
Okay, so on page thirty-eight, um, you'll, you're going to see, uh, some highlighted areas, though, that is all the highlighting, those are three different colors there, that's all one piece of property, that will, um, that's reason application for. And then below it, you'll see, uh, thirteen fifty-four dash D dash nine, that is the other, um, one.
Got you, got you.
Okay, so that kind of get, just orient, so you can see down that project location, the large uncolored one underneath, the ones that are colored, is the other application, so you can see that all the applications you're talking about are right in that area.
Got you.
Okay, so, um, the first one is, uh, thirteen fifty-four dash D dash nine, um, our map currently shows that as, uh, OST, however, um, as I printed out here, and I think I handed out copies, I hope everyone has a copy of it, there is this Apple Valley ordinance twenty twenty dash zero nine that designates this in the general plan for, um, Jen, it's a highway tourist, is that the new zone?
Tourist commercial.
Tourist commercial, so.
Are you talking about our property?
No.
You're talking about the other property.
Yeah.
Five, four, dash, D, dash, nine is underneath the red and green.
Right.
And we're, we're further down.
He's, he's just going to talk about all three of the applications tonight and then we're going to hone in on yours.
And, but that's an important clarification, I think.
Well, yes, because when you, what you just said, I'm like, I don't want to get that tied in with our property.
So, as you can see on attachment A for ordinance twenty twenty zero nine, then it is, that designation area is on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And probably does not cover the Apple Valley thirteen fifty-four dash D dash nine.
Right. So there, you're, you're, are you? Further away from Main Street than five hundred feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you're, you're not covered by this tourist commercial.
That's the clarification.
Right on.
And.
I, I know, there, it's partially. More than a mile south of what they're looking for, so they, they.
Okay, so either right, yeah.
So it's a half mile to the top, then the other half mile to the bottom.
All right, John.
Okay, so, um, the zone being asked therefore is agricultural ten. That's on page five. Okay, and then thirteen fifty-five A is on page twenty-three. Um, it might help to just mark those, these numbers down to tell you, page five for the first application, page twenty-three for the second application. And lastly, page thirty-eight, which is the map that we're on.
Got you, all right, good.
Okay, so thirteen fifty-five is requesting two different zones, single family, point five, and commercial three.
Three.
So let's, let's, um, and then Apple Valley one dash three dash five dash two eleven is, um, as the map marks it, um, OS, open space, however, it definitely falls within this ordinance twenty twenty zero nine, which puts it a tourist commercial. And the three zones that they're asking for is commercial, um, tourist commercial, and single family point five. Okay, so now I'm going to give you, um, three things to consider, keep in mind that this is a four, um, you should at least consider these four, but then, because this is a legislative recommendation to town council, any rational basis for making the decision, um, is okay.
Sure.
So take in all your good judgment, in addition to these four questions. So the first question is whether or not proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan, that's the first thing you want to consider. The second is whether the proposed amendment is harmonious with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity of the subject area, so is it harmonious with the other uses of land, what their applicants asking for, um, to the extent that it'll adversely affect adjacent property? And lastly, if there's public facilities that can support the level of density that they're asking for. Those are the four things to consider. Okay, I'm not going to go into recommendation.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
So since the applicant for two of these three applications is not here.
I believe Carl Raskins is representing.
Oh, you are?
I'm back here with a little bike.
All right, good.
Well, he has a switch vehicle to go to flat tire way up, turn around, couple of, she had another hitched train.
All right, no, welcome truck. Well, let's have you folks come up and if you wouldn't mind, just give us a, walk us through what purpose of the application.
You're very generous.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're getting to us first.
Can I interject one more thing here, um, because the planning commission likes to have, um, a general plan amendment before that's consistent with the zoning amendment, um, staff did not know that when they accepted the applications at the time, so we just initiated that general plan application on the town side.
Okay.
So the applicant didn't ask for that general plan amendment, staff just noticed it so that you can make that decision if you'd like.
Sure, got you, yeah, that's a best practice we've been trying to follow since some many meetings ago when Sean, uh, previewed the charity, you know, and steered us in that direction.
Can you pull up, uh, a map on Google so we can get a distance from the highway?
Sure.
Okay. Sounds like you just want to build on your own property, right?
Yes, we would love to just build a home on our own property.
I don't know why.
Yeah, where are we at?
And, and yes. We, we were informed after we had made our application that the zoning did not allow building, which we have built many times in that same zoning, but, so we are here to zone it agricultural, which we thought was what it was in the first place.
And that's what we're using.
And what has been used for years and years and years.
So, wait, are you saying you've, there are, you've already built on the property?
Well, we, we.
In that zoning, in that area, there's been.
If you look at this map.
Yeah.
This hundred and sixty we own.
Mm-hmm.
We sold ten acres of with our own home on it.
Oh, okay.
And it is divided now into some parcels, but this large parcel we want to build in the middle of.
Sure.
And the whole entire thing, like I said, we've built ones already there. But apparently we need to.
So you were told after the fact.
And when we did the loss splits, we were gonna, we did it with the intention of selling the other parcels so people could build on them, and in the meantime, I, I don't dare sell them now because.
Sure.
We want to know that somebody can buy that and build a house.
Yeah, so they'll have to do their own zone changing, but we are here to change it to agriculture, we made it agricultural ten, but basically, we have a hundred acres, we're just going to be putting a home on.
I understand that water gives and the other parcels can't be built on, we have our own water.
Yes, we have our own, so there's nothing to.
We don't want anything from the city, only just permission to build on it, probably, yeah.
Yeah, um, do you, do we know, okay, so you're pulling this up, what are the, the parcels right around them, are they all?
All OST.
OST.
They're all five, and they're all zoned open space transitional.
Is there, is there ag anywhere nearby?
Um.
It all used to be ag.
Well, we thought they were ag, we've been told that I guess they've been open spaces, but we also built another home previous to that, back in the trees, um, prior to the home that we built out there, it was also built on what we thought was transitional twenty, um, this gentleman indicated that it's been transit, not transition, not transitional, excuse me, open spaces. And at that point in time, open spaces twenty allowed you to build.
Okay.
Um, now, when we were allowed to build on the hundred and sixty acres, I don't know.
Nothing ever came up.
We thought it was ag.
Probably not the first, Richard did it about the same.
No, it wasn't county, it was city when he did his.
Yes, it was city, it was city. They never indicated, but we're not here to argue that point as much as we just needed. It, we just needed to be so we can build our home on it.
Is there ag anywhere, what's the nearest ag close to them?
But all it's used is ag. The whole entire area at this point is, is basically used as ag.
There, everything.
I'm just curious where the nearest ag zone is.
There is a lot, it's probably a hundred feet away, estimating a few feet, that's zone agricultural, okay.
What lot is that?
So one of the things we look at is what are, is it, is a zone you're asking for, is it going to be out there by itself on an island and there's nothing else around it, it's like that? I just wonder. Pretty good. What I mean by, in terms of the zone itself, we don't want to just plop a zone in the middle of everywhere, everything else is something else. It's, it's a lot easier when there's ag nearby.
That whole entire area is just open land, I mean, it's just been used for grazing and.
Grazing, open range, um, everybody out there has.
Had an orchard.
Ten acres with.
Sure.
Ag, and I mean, everybody out there's got cows.
It's all ag.
Okay. And have.
And they probably think it's agriculture, whether it is.
I'm sure everyone thinks it is.
Be the only people.
No.
Right, okay, anything else you want to tell us, we want to get comments.
I don't know, is there any other questions, I, you know, that's, we're just.
If you hang around, boom, there might be some, so.
Well, we will, we will.
Okay, I'll, yeah.
Yeah.
Worse, are you on the same?
I'm not going to have the general plan, where I understand it says ag, so I'm not sure what the argument is about here.
Yeah.
Um. Is it zone ag in the general?
No, 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 not zone, it's, it's general plan, eh.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
OST, but general plan.
Uh, you might want to pull that up.
Yeah, you can, you can.
So he doesn't, he doesn't need a general plan amendment application, if that's what you're saying.
Our map shows a open space transitional and like.
In the general.
As this ordinance twenty twenty shows, but, um, how updated that map is, I'm not exactly sure, however, um.
What, what, where's, where do you see that it's checking out?
On the general plan land use map, if you can pull that up. Or have a copy. Probably had a copy on the wall, but I'm not seeing it.
I have a small one, but I used to.
Yeah, here's one, yeah, this is it, I see it's purple, that's what we're talking about, that's planned, eh. It's actually, part, part of the lots, part of the tax, it doesn't need it, he's fine.
Okay, so we don't need it, that's good, thank you, first, anybody else have comments, anybody online? Okay, um.
We're okay, John.
Okay.
I think we're only.
Yeah, I think we're good, I think, I think we got, we got a verification there, that's, this, this is general maps, that's fairly correct, they've done the last iteration, so I'm sure.
Now, there, there is the commercial.
Yeah, we have it, some on our maps, OST.
Right, but there, there's a layer, you can, you can check just the layer that shows.
But we don't want to look at all, we want to see the general plan.
What the general plan, if you, if you unclick that and just click general plan.
There you go, right, that's it, right there.
That's exactly it.
There it is.
You see, part of it is planned commercial, part of it is planned ag, so.
It shows commercial all, all the way down, the rest of it shows ag.
Yeah, and that, but that's out of date, uh, the commercial comes out.
It doesn't go that far into town.
Wait a minute, well, I thought you were off the road.
We're, we're down, we're down Main Street, so, we're a hundred and sixty acres, and one side of it has Main Street, the other side of it has Coyote.
Oh, I go, I go back that one, that's John.
Are you, are you telling me that this is further than a mile from, is it further than a mile?
That's what I was just going to show you, so, can you go back?
Our turn is pretty close.
So each of these, okay, I know, John, go back, go back please, just a little bit.
Up one, just a.
Right there, okay, hold back, each one of these is a half a mile, so here's a mile right here, and it, can you drag it down a little bit, John?
So we're, there, there, there's one quarter of land, this is the rules, right?
Okay, then, we do have a problem.
Why?
Because the new ordinance that got passed some while back said that back in May, June, by the town council said that with five hundred feet on either side of Main Street is now designated as tourist commercial for a mile.
Side of Main Street, what?
I, I, so if you go down Main Street, go five hundred feet, east of five hundred feet west.
Well, our house is more than five hundred feet off the road, it's.
Right, right.
No, but the, but the property you're trying to rezone includes that section. So the tricky part is that.
So will we have to do a loss split?
Well, that.
That's all it is, John.
We'll, we'll see.
Well, we, that just changed general plan. Only that, that, that.
Is that?
Little piece.
That's what you just said.
Um.
We just want to build our home.
You can make it commercial if you are.
We don't care if that strip is commercial, but we just want to.
I totally understand what you're saying.
And it's in months, in months.
Well, we're living in a better house, I don't care.
It's in four months now.
Okay, all right, I know.
And they keep coming up with something new.
So my recommendation is, and, and I think you, uh, talked to Sean Gussman a while ago about this too, but it's usually a good idea to zone in accordance with your general plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the general plan is a long-term vision, and so it's okay sometimes when it makes sense to zone differently than the general plan. This might be one of those times where you leave the general plan and you still zone it how you're, uh, how the applicants asking, because right now is agricultural. Then later, if they do subdivision or lot splits or anything else, they come back and ask for rezone, you still have that charter that's still, that's true north.
You can back to commercial that time.
That tells you.
At least that would.
Look, here's, so this might be one of the times where it makes sense to zone in spite of.
So, just a question too, there, there's like two ten acre parcels on either side that are, that were with a lot split, they're still, oh, zone open space, so by this degree or whatever, are you just going to change it to commercial, or do I have to, or, or I remember five.
No, we're, we're only, we're only discussing in terms of a, a zone change, the application for this particular parcel, we have no business changing.
What you're saying is, is those are now tourist commercial, too.
General plan, but not so, so there's two different things.
Yes, there's a general plan and an actual zone, so later.
Until somebody makes that zone change application.
Typically, they'll hold it, so, it's irrelevant as far as that goes.
Here, here, I'm.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I just.
So do you have any thoughts about where your, um, where you want to build your house?
Right where that dotted, basically, right.
Yeah, not whole, oh, it's over there, okay, oh, good.
Right, right on the paper, right, the little circle, that little circle is where.
We, we intentionally took it back in because we were told that Main Street would have.
Yeah, keep in mind, that, that little, that little part of your property that juts out that borders Main Street, that's currently in the general plan as tourist commercial, that could very well be valued.
That property for you.
That's what we're going to build.
So we pulled it back in part.
Move it, that's why you move it.
Well, that's why we pulled back in part.
Yeah, you're, you're wise to do that.
They're, they're fine on that, they're up there.
Yeah, you could, uh, you could have some hotels or something that want to take your home to that.
The general plan isn't going to affect rebuilding the home.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only, you can, you can build based on what's known.
Well, I mean, I just don't want to have to do, have the zone change not work because of, with that, but.
If we, if we recommend to the town council that you get your zone changed, just.
Okay.
The thing with the general plan is it's kind of a guideline of what we all want to see, not, it's not long.
Okay, so.
But where it gets tricky is when literally just months ago, we created a new, uh, a new zone in the general plan, a new, a new proposed, uh, uh, zone, and with some very explicit language in there about like, can it, can't be built on there, um, as it, as, at least from my perspective as a planning commission, I don't like the idea of very quickly thereafter just reversing that decision. Um, but as you guys pointed out, where your house is going to go, is it within that term?
No, it's not.
Despite of the fact that we might very well recommend to approve your zone change. So, uh, but we got to close the public hearing before we do that, anybody else have comments?
I'm going to take a longer.
Time's up.
But, uh, I guess I can, uh, the only argument I would have is the planning commission did say a half mile, one mile, so that did end up being a real problem.
But the planning commission, that's just minutes, the ordinance itself says.
The ordinance says a mile.
Yeah, but the ordinance was, did not follow the minutes.
But we didn't have any.
That map, we can't undo something.
Flex the ordinance.
I'm saying that, the ordinance is incorrect.
Okay.
Council have.
Yeah, they have that, we have to deal with what the ordinance says. So, um, let's go ahead and close the public hearing, seeing that there are none for that particular parcel. Um, now. We have to have a public hearing about the zone change, so let's open that.
You really only talked about one parcel.
Right, we're going to come back to the other two. We're going to get it, the other one's here.
Through the general.
Yeah, we like blank them together so we don't get lost, yeah.
We don't bother you.
It's easier for us.
I thought you were doing something different.
So let's have, let's, uh, um, are there, are there any, yeah, obviously, we've talked about this already, but are there any comments relative to the zone change application itself? From the public, anybody online, anybody in the room? Nope, all right, let's close that hearing. All right, this is, this is the part of the meeting where you all don't talk, we talk. Okay, public hearing part's over. What do you think, guys?
I don't see a thing wrong there. Lee?
No, I don't have any issue with it, it's all ag, okay. For this purpose today.
Yeah.
Again, if, if they come back and want the other pieces that are, then the general plan to go commercial, then those, those.
For sure, yeah.
I don't think that's happening at all.
Okay.
I would just say that the other properties that have been split out, they're OST, you have the other region, if you want to be a bill, you know, but that's, so people know that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody have a motion they want to make about this?
Hey, make a recommendation, we break the motion into two parts, one for the general plan and one for the group's own change.
Sure. Okay, uh, point, point of order, uh, don't have, uh, an action protecting, uh, and then I am taking action on the general plan.
We're not going to take any action.
Oh, I thought you just said.
Uh.
I'm just wrong.
That's fine.
We, we don't need to do on this one.
Okay, so, um, I recommend that we approve the zone change application for AB dash one, three, five, four, dash, D, dash, nine, um, from open space to agricultural ten.
Second?
I'll say.
All right, any kind of discussion about that, all the, say aye, aye, anybody opposed? All right, so that one passes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Question, is this, is this, is this in? They don't have to go to the town council, we are, we, we, um.
Make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation, as a rule, they follow those pretty closely generally, um, and so it's just, they're pretty good at their next.
And when is the?
Listen, you know, the next Wednesday, right?
So third Wednesday of each month, I don't, they did one earlier this month, so I'm not sure if they're going to do it on the A P.
All right.
Um, so it's the A P or the next third Wednesday.
It should still be A P, because doing was a, was a special session.
That was follows.
So there should still be.
However, you're setting change, that can change at any moment, so if we haven't had a vote on normal patterns since.
I'm not just Dr. Mary.
Four months.
So how do you be informed and, you know?
Well, I'll call you and make sure you know.
Okay.
Well, I'm on the A T, what I can.
Yeah, just keep, keep an eye out for that, do you have, there's a, there's a, there's a, uh, what's the name of that Utah public notice?
You can't.
Look up Utah public notice, there's a utah.gov site where you can subscribe to, uh, a. You, look up Utah public notice, there's a utah.gov site where you can subscribe to, uh, announcements about.
That would be good, I didn't think there was one, I tried finding it.
It should be the current need most point for.
It's listed on this agenda.
Oh, okay, good deal.
You can log on, make a little thing, and then they'll email you for all the readings to come up.
Yeah, there you go, it's right at the bottom of the.
That works.
Thank you for us today.
Thank you.
Alright, so we got that one, uh, yeah, um, worst point of order is, uh, legit, we can have the public hearing about the next two potential changes to the, uh, to the general plan, but we don't have any action item relative to those on our agenda, so. Alright, if there are any, we'll hold up on those till the next meeting, um. Uh, but I would like to, uh, open the public hearing, and, and are you representing both parcels then? Just, so can we have those discussions together, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing then, uh.
So, I don't, just so you know, the, the hearing part is required, there's, they don't require. So if you do the hearing at any point, you can hold a meeting.
Yeah, but we have to publish an agenda, which, right, I mean.
With, with twenty-four hours.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, we'll see where this goes, but, uh, so I opened the public hearing, and this is, this is with regard to potential, uh, general plan designation amendments for AB one dash three dash five dash two one one and thirteen fifty-five dash A. Uh, can you show us on the map where those two are, and then, uh, while he's doing that, you wanna come up and just give us a rundown on why these, why these applications are in front of us?
So if you can see my cursor, these are the two lots right here.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, the applications are before you, at the request of, uh, the developer, he is wanting to do, well, as you come off Main Street, some highway commercial. And also some, I gotta put my glasses on, sorry, general commercial. And on one side, grocery store, the other side, um, uh, hotel. Then down at the bottom of this, you know, some regular businesses shop, whoever wants to develop. Put some shops there at the very south end on that Main Street corridor, and that's what they wanted to do. And then he's wanting to, it's the same guy that came to you guys, um, that was trying to resurrect the Desert Rose Project, and he got tied up in some a quad mire, um, which is a mess.
Okay.
And he went.
Was that now the desert, Richard Wright, the Jackie Peagle thing or whatever, is that a different one?
Yeah, it was the majestic.
Yeah, it is. Uh, they changed names.
Exactly, and. Yeah, exactly, and so he's, he's wanting to call this the Gateway Preserve. And do a bunch of half acre lots with twelve acre park, soccer fields, um, ball field, uh, he wants, and I proposed to him, we wanna keep Coyote Road separate from even going through the subdivisions we have coming off Main, the, the main drag going to the west and down to the south without even going through the subdivision with the, he wants full fence around it. He did request, oh, I'd like to do it gated, but the mayor said, well, I think we're gonna have in our ordinance, you can't do that, but, you know, he said that he still like to request it, but the way it's laid out, it's almost as if it is gated. And so we'll have three inlets, three outlets on the top piece. Bottom piece, two inlets, two outlets, it's bumped up against the highway, which we'll have to do a big wall there, especially that help tame the noise that goes down it, and, uh.
So.
Yeah.
Um.
That, that piece there is against the highway.
This one here.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's above here, right?
That's split off.
On the back.
Oh, it's on the. Oh, it's over here. Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. This, this is the top.
Oh, that's Main Street, yeah, 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 I got that, I got that.
All the way over there.
Yeah, but it's the.
So if you were, oh, there you go.
Yeah, it goes just like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly like that.
Did, um, okay, so again, of, of the, of the commercial, you mentioned hotel, grocery. You, any other ideas about what else might be there?
Like, when I say business down on the far end, it could be a professional plaza, it could be uh, auto body shop, it could be whatever that person wants to do.
This, this red one at bottom of the night here. I, I thought he was mentioning he wanted to do a, a storage unit or something over there.
I guess that, if, if that was the, yeah, if it's that one then.
I don't, I don't, well, it is whatever.
Whatever use is allowed on that zone, that's what he wants to do.
Gotcha. Okay.
Let's put it that way, right? Whatever use he wants to do in that zone.
You're gonna be here for a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so let's get comments from the public, everybody? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Yeah, just having a meeting on Friday.
Uh, I guess I don't understand, uh, where, well, several things, uh, he's showing commercial up here off of Main Street.
On the S curb?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, not, uh, general plan says tourist commercial.
Right.
So I'm not sure how you get.
Is that, is that what we're doing on the one is, uh, T C?
You got serious commercial right on the bend there, but, um, okay, anybody else have any comments?
Well, I would, uh, I don't see any justification for the single family, that's not.
Okay.
Not on the general plan at all.
Anybody else?
And, and the other parcels, similar to this.
Right down here, yep. Any other comments? Alright, so that's public hearing. We don't take any action on that because we don't have an agenda that allows us to take action, um, and I don't know that we're gonna anyway, um, so let's, um, let's talk about this zone, I think we should go, just for the sake of the minutes, let's take them in, in this separate items here, so let's talk first about the, the, the northernmost one, so let's open the public hearing here. And this is, um, the discussion about the zone change application for AB one dash three dash five dash two one one. And that wants to be changed from its current designation, which is partly, uh, wait, it's currently all designated as commercial right now, right? Commercial and open space.
Yes, that's right. There was, here's your map right here, um, so the blue part towards commercial and the non-colored part is open space. Oh, are you talking about the general plan or the zone?
So the zone itself.
Zone is.
Zone is all open space.
So it's all open space right now.
That, that step along the highway there, that's own commercial right now?
No, no.
Okay.
Nobody ever.
It's all, it's all open space, alright. So the idea here, the applicant wants to, uh, change it from open space to a combination of C three, tourist commercial, and single family, half acre. Um, any public comment on that? Anything?
I don't.
Other than what you already said.
Yeah, same thing, no single family, no.
Totally, gotcha, or anybody else?
Um. I don't see any problems with
Single family.
Single family or commercially we want.
Okay.
For one thing, the, there's no public utilities over there, and he's gonna have to breathe utilities, water and whatever.
Yeah.
Which will benefit everybody on that road in that area.
Yeah.
Fire and everything.
So we're working with.
Yeah, we'd benefit everyone in that direction.
Usually we run into is sometimes when we have high density like that, we're running ag, a body, there's fish.
We're the ones that have the egg, it surrounds us.
Currently, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for the future.
Nobody has egg around there right now.
Well.
Well.
If.
But I have.
We have the land around there.
I have six children and friends that I wouldn't mind if eventually at that point, they could move out here. Sure. If there's utilities there, that would be a definite plus. Gotcha, alright. Anybody else? Alright, let's close that public hearing portion, and again, this is the part where we talk and you all know. Um.
I have my own, and I, I agree with worst, but I mean, we've got the general plan right there, and I think the whole point of that was we kinda did a vote, uh, in town online, I mean, I have a Marty was mayor.
Yeah.
Got everybody's opinion on it, and everybody was saying that they kinda wanna see the area, that's why I'm not chatting, and I'm not add something that's gonna come off this commercial to help our town kinda grow from there type of building, so.
Yeah.
It still allows him to do mostly what he wants, but it looks like he needs to have a little extra commercial in mind, so.
Well, so there's a couple of things in, in play here, one is that, um, I think we have to assume in this particular case that the general plan is uh, more important here than off than it is, right? Because everything's open space, and it just hasn't been zoned otherwise, it's.
Exactly.
So the general plan is pretty important here, largely because we literally just months ago we changed it to, to add this whole tourist, tourist commercial area, and quite frankly, that's the perfect spot for tourist commercial.
Yeah, I think it gives us the, uh, the opportunity to solidify that zone, right?
Yeah. Um, and, and the, the tourist commercial, um, language, um, you know, we, we have a quota here somewhere, we have a list of things that are pages and pages long. Yeah, it's all. Well, groceries are explicitly prevented from being in tourist commercial and as are resident residences. Um. The fella obviously are allowed recreational type of activities.
Do we not see that, that somewhere along that strip, we should have a grocery store, maybe not by the highway, but maybe a little bit further down?
I'd love to have one somewhere in Apple Valley, but the, the language, I mean, it, it, we list in here, this list of yes and no's, grocery and supermarket both have an N next door. So in our infinite wisdom, we decided we didn't want a grocery, tourist commercial back in the trade, but now that can change. You know, it's a way to word this reason now, it's not.
Well, all, all I'm saying is maybe, based on, they, they, they wanted to mix it here, why don't we set a mix in here, why don't we ask them, see if they'd be willing to mix it down here at the bottom? So that the grocery store can go that way, that he's talking about.
Well, the, yeah, and I'm all for that, the problem is, where, it, it, my big concern is the green area.
Right, right, exactly.
Yes, that's, that's, that's about it, within five hundred feet of Main Street, we vary, it's a potential, a mile.
So Carl Rassellson's representing you, so we need to talk to him about that, or what, what are we thinking, how, how, where do we go? Free this button.
Well, I, I, I mean, as the plan is, I don't see how.
I would prefer to see them take advantage of the general plan. Designation is. Commercial and leave it that way and change.
If, if what, if, if what we got was an application that said, I want flowers, commercial here and here, and over here, I'll do the eventual outside.
Right.
But I think that would work. I don't see any way to say no.
Little decent tourist.
Obviously, that's, that comes very much in line to your point, and now we're like, oh, yeah, so commercial on the road. I mean, we, we, even this up here with this brand is, that's if they're designated that C three, that's backed out of the middle of it.
Tourist, yeah.
So we, we have, we created that designation for a reason, so that it's different.
Right, I, I, and I remember.
And so that you don't have auto body shops, you know, like.
Exactly.
So how, how, uh. Yeah, if you have any idea whether right over there, five hundred feet either side of Main, you could do just once on this long.
See if you want a map on that.
There's a laundry list here of what you can and can't do, and, and that, tell them to the right. If it's got a P, it says permit, uh, but it ends, it's not. And, um.
We would, I think you would be amenable to that, like, if you just did your recommendation to stick with what you guys have planned.
Okay.
I encourage you would work. Would you guys on that?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm.
I really do.
I think it'd work out really well.
Right, I think it would.
We just want the areas to go towards.
You're saying five hundred feet within each side of.
Both sides of.
And, and down the same on this one.
Exactly.
So you'd have to separate your commercial from your resident, so basically, your, your residents wouldn't be able to start within five hundred feet. And then this, this, this is, this is a non-starter, this has to be if it's, if it's five hundred feet, wherever that is.
Why don't we do that?
That's tourist commercial, that's.
That's tourist commercial, and that can be through, through the, uh, grocery store, I've given.
Yeah, that'd be awesome, if there's enough room there, I think.
I'd rather have it there, I'd hate, I'd, I'd hate to have, there's no sense having it down Main Street. That's too much trail, I like that, I like that a lot.
That's a really good idea.
So how do we, um, in the minutes, have you ever reflected this discussion?
I, I obviously would not suggest something the applicant doesn't agree to, but since he has, then I would just make the recommendation. It'll go to the town council.
So. Uh, and, and, as far as I'm concerned, um, well, there's actually a conversation about this number, right now, we're still talking about this one. Anybody wanna make a motion? Or, or.
That you're gonna repeat yourself on.
So are, are we gonna be to motion that we deny as is, or talk about accepting it with some changes?
Accepting it with, uh, with, with the agreement and follow, follow the, the general plan with regard to the commercial, tourist, tourist designation.
Along maybe.
Yeah, and you might wanna be explicit about the five hundred feet with the residence. Just to be sure. You got that? Do you wanna do it? No?
Okay, let's, let's see, so we are.
Yeah, this is the one with all the.
Three dash five, that's two one one.
Yep.
So. Um.
Oh, before you do that, please, I do wanna um, the, 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 the relative high density of this half acre thing does make me concerned, I had a conversation the other day with someone from the public health department. And we're, 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 these half acre lots are.
So, I think this, this.
Apple Valley currently, for the most part, everybody has.
I'm, I'm gonna have to answer that real quick, because I, I would.
Is there some kind of high density sewer system?
Yeah, so on this map, I'm gonna point it to these people first. There's this little area here that we're gonna make into a park, and we're gonna do a drip system treatment, we're gonna run sewer all to a.
Okay.
A plant, if you wanna see what the system's like, they got one in my house in southern part, it's down by Bench Lake, and what it is, it's a bio reactor. And it has a bunch of these wipers, all they have, it goes into this big chamber, and it so it, it, yeah, it's there, it sets and turns it and, and treats it, and then when it comes out, it's less nitrates, or, and the B, uh, I.
It's an underground.
Yeah.
Mini sewer.
The biological oxygen demand is less than ten, and the, um, uh, total suspended solvents is less than ten.
Okay.
So it's like, this is.
And that, that, make sure that's.
So this plant.
We don't have any business putting.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but this plant is proposed. If the manufacturer just told us a story about the contractor that they sold one to in Africa, these are working, there's like, uh, fifteen hundred of these worldwide. And the contractor called the manufacturer, said, don't, you have lots you can supply, because they have, what they, what, when it comes, it has these lifting eyes, it comes, the set it in place, and it's all stainless steel. And the thing I like about it, compared to my old pods, which were hollowing, and you'd live with a backhoe or something, you would bust the bits on it. This thing's totally stainless steel, I mean, you, you'd have to hit it super hard to put it in, and, because it's pretty solid.
Is it colored with supplements or?
Oh, yeah, it is, it is, it's, uh. Oh, yeah, it is. It is. It's a, it's 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 the stainless stainless steel that does it. So whatever that alloy is.
Wow.
I I opened it up just barely today to adjust my air. Because they they're having me adjust the air to, because we're trying to hit numbers. And I looked in there, all I saw was. You know, you get a little bit of film, but all the all these little wafers, they look like potato chips. And they have like a brown coating that grows on it, which is called the biomass. It it's what it's what it's what eats up the.
Sure.
And and treats, cleans the water. Well, in Africa, the reason the guy was asking for these locks, he said. The people are going over to their modules, lifting the lid.
Chicken chips.
And no, they're grabbing the water because it's so clean and drinking it.
No. Probably cleaner than their water there.
People probably cleaner than what they're getting down there, yeah.
So he told me that story and I believe it because my my city's water system and has the water is super clean.
So maybe just save some subjects of building that includes a a large area of ground.
And we're wanting to do that on both of them and get the sewer all to one spot and the city wants to do that on every subdivision.
We do need to. We're gonna that this this guy from the health department, we if if we get our nitrates above a certain level, we're toast. It's almost impossible to draw them.
Right.
So Carl, if I'm not mistaken, this is the same system that we were talking about, doing like four of them and adding all over town. So we're gonna do four small spots and then everybody will bite at that point. So we don't have one giant system. We'll have four smaller ones, all underground, we can add to this league.
Yeah, it's decentralized, but it they're so easy to maintain. I can't believe how. My last system has nozzles to clean. This thing has no nozzles to clean. You just, like I said, you just throttle the air and it sets and rolls the media. That's all it does. And it has an air compressor. That's all you gotta do is just watch it do its math.
Good, that's good, because I would. But yeah.
So Richard, any other question? Do you? Did they have water right?
They they do, but they're gonna have to for for this development, they're going to have to put city water. So they're gonna turn their water in because in J C, they're gonna turn their water into the town, into the water district. Um, they're gonna participate in building down a tank. They're gonna participate in the water main, get all over there. They're actually gonna participate and they'll pay. Main Street all the way to the bottom of the development. I mean, they're they're doing a ton of stuff for this. So it's gonna benefit everybody out there and the entire town on this. Yeah.
Okay, alright, let's get back to the motion then.
Alright.
About that disruption.
Let's try this. Okay, so. Um, make a motion that we. Recommend to the town council for approval. The zone change for A B dash one dash three dash five dash two one one. Uh, so far as it will. Be changed or amended to follow the general plan as closely as possible. They need to make sure that they include. Water ground structure, obviously necessary, and a sewer treatment system for that area in order to handle the density.
Okay.
Work.
Um, can we just talk about the, because they requested three different zones and so um. For tourist commercial, you're saying that they should follow the general plan's tourist commercial area?
So yes, the tourist commercial needs to be not not within five hundred feet of, I mean, the tourist commercial, it has to be tourist commercial within five hundred feet of you just have a.
As it's drawn, not Trump is not currently gonna work, but if they will amend it to follow the general plan, then we will go ahead and push it forward.
Okay, and then the general commercial, are you talking about expanding that or leaving that same as they have it drawn?
Well. Part of it has to go back to tourist commercial.
Right, so it was the other part, I mean.
The other part.
They let them shift it or they?
Yeah, I'll I'll show you and be simple. Where's that part of our of our uh.
Big column?
Yeah. So here's what we're gonna do. That five hundred feet here is gonna be tourist commercial around everything parallel to Main Street. And then this back part that's beyond five hundred is gonna be the general. Does this say general commercial, is that right?
I have.
Okay. General commercial for the grocery store.
Okay, so do you mind um exactly as it's drawn, other than? It'll be changed to general or to tourist commercial or the general plan?
Yes.
Is that worth it?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Which is and five hundred feet each side of.
No, I mean, keep in mind that that's gonna take a pretty good chunk out of this. Yeah, that's fine residential area. If you're five hundred feet off.
That's fine.
Okay.
Well.
That's pretty.
Well, yeah, we'll figure something. We'll just.
Vise the more.
Did did you guys see a preliminary flat, the initial one that we were running around with? Anyway. It's right there. We'll. We'll fix it up so that it.
Okay, alright, so is that good? You got that? Anybody who wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Alright, any for the discussion? No? Alright, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, that passes. Um, are you going to be in the public hearing yet about that? No, like open a public hearing on the discussion about. Uh, the app, the zone change application for. What is this?
This should be thirteen five A.
Thirteen A B thirteen fifty five dash A. Any comments? Forrest?
Uh, this shows a big single family. Still not understanding what supports that. That's there's nothing on the general plan that says single family for this or the last one.
For sure. Gotcha.
So I don't see how you're getting around that. Or just ignoring it or?
Well, it's always key now, so.
No, it's always key, it's only general plan, that's what.
So did did you not hear the motion we made? We made a motion that they amend their plan to fit the general plan.
So they're not getting any single family?
No. They 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 will get a single family.
That doesn't match the general plan.
What what's what's the?
That's true.
What what is the beach?
We don't have, we don't have half acre lots in the general.
What what is the beach?
And that's.
On both sides of the blue?
Yes. And it.
Ouch. We're gonna have to change that or change our our motion then because that means they have a lot of stuff, not adding on to people's family. According to that, because we told.
Well, did you say general plan only with regard to this?
That's what I thought we were talking about.
Right, is that how you wrote, read the uh motion?
Only only in regards to tourist.
Yeah.
Okay, so so we're good.
So in effect, our motion ignored the general plan. So thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? This uh, so so we're good. Oh, we're all. That other one passed. Um, any other comments about this one? Alright.
Oh. Can I get one more name?
One more, you got it.
There is some evidently commercial down in the form.
Yeah, yeah, what's down there in the bottom of this red?
Oh, but that's gonna be changed to your.
Tourist commercial.
T Z five hundred feet.
I don't think the tourist commercial goes down that form.
It does.
It does. It actually. It goes right on the block that piece.
Nope, double check it.
We got the map right up there on the screen.
It shows it going past there.
Not not.
No, we go the, we go the right here. What's?
So how far down does the tourist?
That right there that you're seeing there, that blue, that's commercial, that's old, that hasn't been updated.
Oh, that's the old.
So you're saying tourist commercial moves.
Goes a mile in every direction from that intersection.
From uh from uh fifty nine intersection. So currently, as you see it, it's a mile and a half in blue.
And just, yeah, just for your, for 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 the applicants.
Yeah.
The knowledge.
Also, it's cleared down.
It's cleared down to your throat.
That that's all.
Stop short of that.
Alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And now for the uh this particular application. If we follow the same recommendation, which we may very well do just now, because the last one we did was for. Oh, yeah, okay. This one's a little more complicated for you because not only do you have your five hundred feet on Main Street, because you got your five hundred feet on fifty nine. That's tourist, you can't have residents there either.
For example. That's all.
That's all. Oh, it's not, yeah. Our our new tourist commercial uh zone is a mile in every direction from the intersection of fifty nine and maybe. And it's explicitly, this allows residential in that zone.
What states is only a triangle there?
Yeah.
No, that's not where it was originally done.
Can they, can there be some conception like would they accept this along Main Street and have it against the highway? Because it really doesn't.
That's what I, that's what I think we ought to do.
Because it really doesn't, because there's not gonna be an access.
So that that's it.
Now, it only goes a mile, so how far is that mile?
Wait, wait a minute, real quick.
Down Main, down fifty nine. You might only have the top part of your thing that you have to stay away from.
Um, now, just a second. So in the meeting that that we had with UDOT. Um, they want us explicitly to identify five spots in town. That we're going to make as our touching fifty nine. They want us to eliminate many accesses on fifty nine we can for safety. So they said that what Kane County over by Kanab did this about six years ago and they they made. Five spots going on on eighty nine towards like Powell. And everybody that comes in, they say, Ken, you need to work on this. You can't have this and they're not letting people have access. So based on what UDOT asked us and what UDOT wants, we shouldn't go down a mile on fifty nine in direction because UDOT does not want us putting more access on that.
But is there any way for you to, using Google Maps measuring tool?
Yes, I just did it on the screen. I'll see if there is uh from that intersection, basically it's a mile down to that property line, the bottom property line, regardless which stretch you're doing on. Does that make sense?
Down to the bottom.
So on S R fifty nine, it's a mile down to the bottom of the property line and on Main Street, it's a mile down.
Oh, it's a mile.
So that would, like you said, that would only leave a tiny little triangle.
That would ruin that piece and we can't allow anyone to have access along fifty nine rather than it's sort of pointless.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what's gonna happen?
So we need to make an amendment to that general plan or or our ordinance. And have our base on our conversation. UDOT's not gonna allow anybody any access.
Let's try to figure out what we can typically do here. I mean, I've been trying to wanna. Follow this one one year.
That's what I was saying.
But. Because they said.
Yeah, follow without following the general plan.
Yeah. This right here.
I think this for for finding the same. All of it.
I I I think this one parcel, let's all hold for a minute. Let's talk about the pressing act. We have this information from UDOT.
I think this guy last week.
Okay.
And we need to amend our stuff.
Okay.
It was so much.
It's gonna be hard for you.
So. Um. We're 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 for the applicant's sake, uh Forrest, can we? Have this. Um. We're a little bit of a quandary here. We get the current general plan would 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 basically shrink your your uh residential.
Make a giant triangle out of your residential.
Yeah, and so I'm wondering is if you can, if we're we're gonna recommend to the town council, I believe, that's based on our discussion here, is that. We shorten that mile to something maybe put to a half a mile down fifty nine. Okay? Um, in the general plan. But that's the next step. So I'm wondering if you would. What what's gonna affect being here is we're either gonna deny or table this. I'm gonna suggest we table this, the 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 discussion on this parcel. And meantime, if you could bring us back. If for both of these parcels, something redrawn it based on the earlier discussion. That would go a long way for getting this parcel approved. Is there a way that we can uh address this next week with council too, so we can kind of have a. Discussion? Yeah, one of the things back to you. One of the things we're gonna do as a result of this meeting is recommend that on the town council, the the next town council meeting, they have a an agenda item where they. Revise the ordinance for tourist commercial. To at the very least shorten it maybe down to a half a mile or something even less. And that's based on conversations with Richard with UDOT that they're saying we want to limit access up.
Is there, can you make a recommendation of a approval with the half mile to city council and with the. Uh, condition if they're okay with it? Um. The.
The problem.
They can move with it. If not, we come back to you to discuss it.
It it what it does is it completes two things though, because what in 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 one motion then recommend that they approve it with with. They have to, they'd have to go through a whole process of updating that with it first. Well, I see. The tourist commercial.
It's just cleaner.
So so does that mean that they gotta go through that? When you say table, we gotta go through that process first and that could be our one month, two month process?
I'm gonna guess they can do it in one meeting. They just have to change, they have an ordinance now on the book that defines what tourist commercial is in that zone. They can in one meeting, I think. No, they have to have a public hearing.
And and they need you to make your motion as well. So the two things they need is a a public hearing, finding a zoning level. And a recommendation, which means you have to take action.
We have.
So you're gonna have to have another meeting.
We have to have another meeting. So, yeah, we can't really do it in one motion. Uh, because we don't have.
You you can just zone it and spike the fact that the general plan says something, but if you want the general plan to lie first, then you need another meeting.
I want the general plan to lie because I don't wanna, I don't like the idea of making. An exception to something we literally just moved on minutes ago, you know?
I don't think it's the development's fault or making me discuss some information.
Yeah, you guys can't be faulted. I mean, honestly, we all.
It would be cleaner for everybody involved.
One thing I would say is. Are we still public or we?
No.
Okay, so one thing I I've. For the sake of time and and everything else that's going on and and you know, their money for their investment and they could if there was a way, we should. Because who knows where the whole economy seems to go in the next year or two, and if money makes you spend down the window, you need to spend all this money putting in infrastructure to benefit us.
No, I get that.
I mean, what you're.
The problem is tail wagging the dog too often around here. I mean, we often get ourselves in fines. And. Time is of the essence for sure until we get that from a property owner that's helped us put.
We have to do things in an orderly fashion sometimes to where we just get.
Yeah, I just, I'm really reluctant to, I mean, I I I take your.
So so maybe we could help in in a way that maybe. Thank you there and we make a recommendation for that, then maybe we could put together a a earlier meeting to help map. We've been having. Yeah, so they don't have to wait so long. But they have to get this other stuff done first, right?
We have to have at least ten days to have a public hearing, right?
Because you've done the public hearing part. You can you can notice anything for.
We wouldn't have to, we would have to have another public hearing to change the general map again.
No, you did the public hearing today and it was notes properly.
Okay, so.
Okay.
They're doing special.
No, what I'm talking about is that the public hearing changed the general map for this.
Don't matter the word.
You have.
That all all of these happen through an ordinance, right? Any zone change or general map designation changes. When it gets to the town council level and they approve it, it'll be in ordinance form.
No, I understand, but my point is we we, just to be clear, we had a public hearing today about. Potential changes to the general map with regard to this application, not with regards to the tourist commercial.
And and that's fine. You can do that. You noticed it, you have discussions and you can go from there, you can make what decision, the recommendation you like. Does that make sense?
We can do that in a special need.
You can do that. If you if you in this meeting decide you want to change it to a single family. Uh, point two five or or greater or anything, any other zone, you can do that. Notice probably. Makes sense. And then general plan, you did your public hearing, now you need to make an action, but Forrest. We don't have it on the agenda, so you see twenty four hours notice, say, we're gonna take discussion and action on that and then in twenty four hours or or then you can.
Well.
There'll be two items, the actual change.
If you're waiting for the second one.
Yeah, I would suggest we do it in a order so that we can get the town council to vote. So it's about to be right.
So then only we're gonna make a recommendation on how to address the length on fifty nine of of the general plan.
Well, I think we're just gonna put it off.
No, because we don't have agenda for that. We have to have, I would I would suggest that somebody would put the table, this particular application today. And then let's have a.
Right.
Another meeting where we, because we, as as John is right, we've already had the public hearing on the on the.
We can actually help and flush it through once once it gets.
For sure, yeah, so we'll we'll try to get any other. For sure, yeah, so we'll we'll try to get the other.
And if the um, I I'm obviously not a lawyer, it's not obvious from my speech. Um, if you'd like, before we notice the meeting, I can reach out to the town attorney.
Just double check that we we're doing. Or ask Forrest usually.
Well, if you, since you brought it up, uh, you you have done a hearing, but a hearing, agenda, notice, whatever. Talk about specific thing, this is quite a bit different.
It is. That does make me a little nervous, yeah.
And and let's get a legal.
And yes.
Let's get an opinion and find out. It could be good, maybe not.
I agree.
All right, so anybody who wants to. I'll make a motion that we uh table the application. Uh, zone change for A N one three five five. I guess A of O S T to S F point five and C three and. All right, uh, that was in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Here. So we'll we'll try to get that. Seriously, thanks for your help. Yeah, for sure. No, I this is exciting. I mean, but really, you guys are so much more pleasant to come to. You guys and your town board than Hurricane City right now.
Oh.
No, I'm dead serious. You guys do. You guys, they gotta make sure. You guys don't re- they bring in personal stuff. And and does anybody want to make another motion? I would like to make another one. What do you like to move?
These are the people up there.
That was a paper, aye? Thank you all. All right, now, thanks. Thank you, Ken. I'm glad you were here. We gotta completely leave everybody without with anyone else here.
Yeah.